Now last, the Wunsaket High School students. Give us your presentation.
Thank you very much. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Christopher Depot. I'm the band director at Wunsaket High School. And I want to thank Mr. Guo for inviting us to perform here tonight. We're here to represent the Wunsaket High School Music Department. I have behind me the drum line from our marching band. As we know, COVID hit us all very hard and we were quite worried about what the state of the music department was going to be beginning this year. And as many of you have seen in the community, we've come back extremely strong. We have played at the Autumn Fest Parade. We just played last week at the Veterans Day Ceremony right across the street. We've played at several football games and other events. And we're getting ready for our Thanksgiving football game performance at Tucker Field against Cumberland, our tradition. So tonight, we're going to be giving you a sneak preview of something that we started before COVID, where we have begun a drum line battle between our drum line and the Cumberland drum line. So I ask that you please do not film this tonight or put it on social media because we do not want to leak this to the Cumberland High School Music Department. This is a sneak peek of what you will be seeing on Thanksgiving Day. But before we start, the members of the percussion drum line would like to come up and introduce themselves.
Hi, my name is Anthony Rodriguez. I am a senior at Wunsaket High School. My free time, I am a boxer, but I am also a percussionist for the Wunsaket High School Band. I am grateful for being a part of this band. Since freshman year, it's given me something to look forward to throughout my high school career. Meet awesome people like these guys, play with them throughout the year, and I'm excited to play for you guys and just grateful to be here. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Alexia Rivera, freshman at the Wunsaket High School. I've been in band since sixth grade. I know that COVID hit us hard and we weren't able to play much. We played some in seventh grade, not a lot in eighth grade. We weren't able to do the parade. In my free time, I am a sports player. I just currently finished field hockey and now I'm trying out for the Wunsaket High School Girls Basketball Team. I joined percussion and was looking forward to band and high school because I knew it was going to be a way to bring people together and our community and things like that. It just gives me some free time after school and something to keep me busy. Going to rehearsals Tuesday night and got a great teacher for it.
Great, welcome.
Hi, my name is Justin Mizola. I'm a sophomore at Wunsaket High School, a member of the PTEC program at the Wunsaket Area Career and Technical Center and percussion. I'm grateful for percussion because you get to play a wide variety of percussion instruments throughout the years that you need in percussion. I'm also grateful for the social aspect of the class.
Welcome.
Hi, my name is Jade. I'm a junior and I'm a percussionist and a guitarist. I am grateful for percussion because it helped me find myself and have something to look forward to every day. And it became something that I'm very passionate about and I've had lots of fun along with new friends who are like family now.
Welcome.
My name is Anna Gaye and I am a junior and I attend Wunsaket High School. I am a hockey player as well as a percussionist. I love percussion because every single time you step through those band doors, you are needed and your role as any place in the band is important to everyone. And you meet people like, you know, everyone. It's a safe space and you have a wonderful teacher who understands that, you know, you're going through stuff, so I like it. It's really cool.
Welcome. Congratulations.
Hi, my name is Bentley Sitophone and I am a freshman at the Wunsaket High School. I am a PTEC student and I'm also a percussionist. I joined a percussionist band and I'm grateful I joined it because it allows my high school life to have some life in it without it becoming too boring. And it makes me feel useful that I'm actually doing something inside of the school.
Welcome.
At this time, they're going to come up front and perform what we've prepared for, the drum line battle. You'll hear three pieces and they'll pause in between each one.
Yeah, so take that Cumberland.
Thank you very much and we wish you a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well done. Now we'll go into public comments. If there's anyone that would like to address the school committee, please come to the podium, state your name and your address for the record, please. Don't see anyone. So I'll just make an announcement that before we begin with the superintendent's recognition and announcements, I just want to say that we're going to be taking a 10-minute break after the recognitions and the awards are given so that we can all enjoy a snack, I think a feast, prepared by Chef Paul and the chefs and students, and so we can congratulate the award winners personally. So Dr. McGee, please begin with the recognitions and announcements.
Before I get to that, Mr. Chairman, I just want to congratulate our amazing drum line students from Wunsaket High School. I want to thank Mr. Depot and Ms. Alves for the amazing job that they do with our musicians at Wunsaket High School. We have the best music program around and I think Cumberland's in trouble. Are we in agreement here? I think Cumberland's in trouble.
I think so.
So I'm going to start this evening's recognitions and announcements with the Wunsaket Education Department Employees of the Year. So what I'm going to do and I'm going to ask the school committee is to follow me to the front of the stage and we'll start with the Teacher Educator of the Year. This evening marks a time each school year where we recognize our employees in the Wunsaket Education Department. This is probably for me, and I dare speak for the school committee, is probably one of the best times of the school year for two reasons. Number one, we get to recognize the incredible, hardworking and dedicated employees in the Wunsaket Education Department. And number two, it's an opportunity for us to enjoy the delicious cuisine from the Wunsaket Area Career and Technical Centers culinary program. So there's two reasons that this is the best night of the year. First, we're going to, I'll be naming our employees and then after that, we're going to enjoy some delicious food from our culinary program. But I'm going to first start with the educator/teacher of the year, the 2020-21 educator of the year. This year, I have the pleasure of announcing that we have two Wunsaket Education Department Teacher of the Year recipients. Before I announce the two teachers of the year, let me describe some of their achievements, characteristics, and quotes from the nominating staff. I quote, "They've shined throughout our distance learning adventure. They've worked countless hours in the district helping all members understand and implement distance learning. They've composed such an effective plan that the Wunsaket Education Department was amongst the best in the state with their plans to ensure teaching and learning. They have the wonderful ability to make innovative ways of using technology accessible and doable for so many educators in our district. They have the ability to listen to what the educator's goal is, find the tools that will make the goal possible, teach the use of the tools in language that the educator can understand, and help the teacher monitor the success of the blended learning chosen." They both go out of their way to make blended learning successful in our district. They're patient, humorous, friendly, and incredibly smart. And if I could add my own quote, I can say with complete assurance that we would not have gotten through the last year and a half without the efforts of these two amazing individuals. So it's with great pleasure that I announce the 2020-2021 Wunsaket Education Department Teachers of the Year, Ms. Heather Neal and Ms. Justinato. The next category is Paraprofessional of the Year. Again, before I announce the Paraprofessional of the Year, let me describe the recipient's achievements, characteristics, and quotes from nominating staff. She goes above and beyond what she does daily. She truly cares for the students. She works with each child as if they were her own. She's always willing to lend a hand to other staff members and classrooms. If a student needs something, she will ask if we could buy what they need, and sometimes she just buys it herself. She never wants to see a child go without. She always puts the kids first and always helps make the classroom a fun, safe learning environment. She always has a smile on her face and the students feel extremely comfortable and safe talking to her. It's with great pleasure that I announce the 2020-2021 Wunsaket Education Department Paraprofessional of the Year, Ms. Robin Darling. Unfortunately, Robin couldn't be here tonight, but we will make sure that she receives her award tomorrow. The next award goes to the Secretary of the Year. It's you? Before I announce the Wunsaket Education Department Secretary of the Year, let me describe achievements, characteristics, and quotes from nominating staff. She goes above and beyond in her role as Finance Secretary. She's a team player, helping in all departments and all schools. She has covered the position of School Secretary when a school is not staffed with a secretary, and that's happened pretty often. She's there to take on a challenge no matter how big or how small. She is kind and helpful. She is often working after hours. It's with great pleasure that I announce the 2020-2021 Wunsaket Education Department Secretary of the Year, Mrs. Carolyn Gerard. I'm going to stop you right there. So I looked it up today and we have been working together for four years. Can you believe that? Is that one of those situations where it's been an eternity or it's blown right by? Yes. It was obvious from day one that Carolyn, she was very knowledgeable and very professional right off the bat. And I've often said that someone needs, at the Wunsaket Education Department, there should be a full-time employee keeping me on task. Not only does Carolyn do that on a daily basis, but she's extremely organized, she has excellent communication skills, and she makes sure she follows through until the job gets done. Oftentimes, she is tasked with something that she hasn't been trained on. She always gets the job done regardless of that. And recently, I won an award as Business Manager of the Year for Rhode Island. Quite frankly, a portion of that, a sizable portion of that belongs to Carolyn because without her, there's no way I would receive that award. Not only do I consider you a great employee, but I consider you a great friend as well. Thank you for all your work you do.
Brad, pitch your time.
Next, I'm going to announce the Custodian Maintenance Worker of the Year. Before I announce the WED's Custodian Maintenance Worker of the Year, let me describe the recipient's achievements, characteristics, and quotes from nominating staff. He is a team player who always looks out for all staff in the district. He engages with students professionally and respectfully. He always looks to help others in need. He comes to work well before his shift starts and stays until the job is done even when we are shorthanded and it's not his work. We want to recognize this man for his work. He always goes above and beyond his job description and we appreciate his willingness to partner with us and to make our jobs a little easier every day. It's with great pleasure that I announce the 2020-2021 Custodian Maintenance Employee of the Year, Mr. Paul Blanchard. Next, I'll announce the Support Staff Person of the Year. Before I announce that the Support Staff Person of the Year, let me describe the recipient's achievements, characteristics, and quotes from nominating staff. He's a valued member of the Technology Department and the WED family. He always addresses technical issues in a timely manner. Problems as they may arise do not remain problems for long. He's a quick study and possesses a natural talent for analyzing issues and system challenges and providing solutions. He's always prompt, respectful, and kind. Each and every day, he provides the same level of dedication and support for our faculty, staff, students, and families. It is with great pleasure that I announce the 2020-2021 Wunsaket Education Department Support Staff Person of the Year, Mr. Jeff Barrow. So that concludes the presentation of our WED Employees of the Year awards. Let's give everybody a really strong round of applause. Before we head over to some delicious Wunsaket Area Career and Technical Center food, let me just say, this is an opportunity to honor and to recognize the incredible employees that we have in our district. And this really emphasizes the sense of family that we have here based on, you know, what I read from the folks who nominated each of our award winners. And it just, it makes me so proud to know that this is a district that works together, comes together, and especially over the last year and a half, just did an incredible job of providing a high-quality education for our students here in the city. So again, thank you all, and it's on to the food line.
I'll do that. I'll make a motion to...
I'll do that. I'll make a motion to...
Fantastic job, Culinary Institute. That was fantastic. Great job. I'll make a motion to come out of recess at 7:44 PM. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Costa, Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
This is Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
I think Mr. Burke wants more food. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. McGee because we have some more recognitions and announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I would like to read some appointments for three positions here in the Wensocket Education Department. First, I'm pleased to introduce Mr. Brian Ernst as the Assistant Principal for the Ninth Grade Academy at Wensocket High School. Mr. Ernst comes to us with 31 years of experience in education, 18 years of which were serving as an administrator. Mr. Ernst earned his Master's of Education K-12 Principal Certificate from Plymouth State University. He's highly qualified and certified by the Department of Education as a building-level administrator. He prides himself on building positive relationships with students, parents, staff, and community members, and he works with a student-centered philosophy grounded in research and driven by data. Mr. Ernst most recently comes to us from Epping School District in New Hampshire, where he served as principal for their high school for the past four years. There, his school was recognized for their exemplary work in competency-based education by the United States Department of Education. Additionally, he served as the NIASC Committee Chair, ACE Lead, and was the SAS Assessment Building Coordinator. Based on his record of accomplishments, I highly recommend Mr. Ernst for the position of Assistant Principal of the Ninth Grade Academy at Wensocket High School.
Good job.
Yes, he is. And I believe Mr. Ernst is here. Next, I am pleased to introduce Mr. Jeff Goss as Assistant Principal for Climate and Culture at Wensocket High School. Mr. Goss comes to us with 23 years of experience in education, 16 years which were served as an administrator. Mr. Goss holds a Master's of Art in Business Education from Johnson &amp; Wales University and a Bachelor, Bachelors of Science in Sports Management from Springfield College. He's highly qualified and certified by RIDE as a building-level administrator. Mr. Goss comes to us most recently from Providence Public Schools, where he served as an Assistant Principal. He has built a reputation of being able to reach the most difficult students by building relationships and trust with them. He's a visible administrator who makes constant contact with students, whether it be in the classroom, hallway, lunch, bus duty, or at their athletic events. He finished runner-up twice for the Rhode Island Association of School Principals Assistant Principal of the Year Award, and also served on two NIASC visiting committees, both times working on the leadership standard by himself. In past administrative roles, he's helped to improve graduation rates from 69% to 91%, increased the number of students taking advanced placement courses, increased enrollment at the Carrere and Technical Center, and helped to improve student attendance. Based on his record of accomplishments, I highly recommend Mr. Goss for the position of Assistant Principal of Climate and Culture at Wensocket High School. I am pleased to introduce Ms. Maria Galatto as Special Education Middle and Elementary School Chairperson for the Wensocket Education Department. Ms. Galatto comes to us with 21 years of experience in special education, which included progressive experience with severe intellectual disabilities, autism, and mild-moderate populations. Ms. Galatto holds a Master's in Special Education from Rhode Island College and a Bachelor of Science in Communication Disorders from the University of Rhode Island. She is highly qualified and certified by RIDE as an administrator of special education. Ms. Galatto comes to us most recently from Providence Public Schools, where she served as a special education teacher and specialist. While there, she designed and delivered research-based professional development for teachers in differentiating instruction, IEP development, co-teaching strategies, assisted teachers in the preparation, planning, and writing of individualized education programs, and served as a resource in identifying appropriate instructional strategies and interventions of students needing both support academically and behaviorally. Additionally, she served as the Vice Chairperson of the Rhode Island Special Education Advisory Committee, working with many educational stakeholders across Rhode Island and advised the Commissioner of Education about special education in our state. Additionally, in her past role, she served as LEA and led a team of high-qualified professionals, meetings, as well as participated in learning walks and provided feedback and supported teachers by modeling lessons. Based on her record of accomplishments, I highly recommend Mrs. Galatto for the position of Special Education Middle and Elementary School Chairperson in the Wensocket Education Department. Next, I would like to let the committee know that on November 2nd, Governor Daniel McKee and Commissioner Infante Green were at Burnin Heights Elementary School. They were there, holding a press conference, a statewide press conference, in which they made the announcement that Wensocket was going to be one of nine districts that would be receiving LEAP grant funds for the next two years. So some of us were able to make that, that press conference. It was a wonderful opportunity for the governor to come out, as well as the commissioner, to speak with us about our successes and also areas that we certainly need support in the Wensocket Education Department. and also areas that we certainly need support in the Windsocket Education Department. So I'd like to thank the governor and the commissioner for coming out to Vernon Heights Elementary School on the 2nd, and we look forward to working with the Department of Education around the LEAP grant and the initiatives that will come from that, that grant. I'd like to announce some upcoming vaccination clinics. The FDA has approved the Pfizer COVID-19 vaccine for children ages 5 to 11 years old. This is a two-dose series given 21 days apart. Our elementary schools have been and will continue to be hosting clinics to receive the vaccines. The following schools have already had their, their vaccine clinic, Harrison Coleman, that was on November 15th, and the Citizens Poltheer Campus was held yesterday, November 16th. Today, there was a clinic at Vernon Heights. There will be a clinic at Globe Park Elementary on November 22nd from 3:30 to 6:00 PM, and at Leo Savoy on November 23rd from 3:00 to 6:00 PM. For more information and to schedule an appointment, you can go to HTTPS colon backslash, backslash covid.ri.gov backslash vaccination. Next, I would like to recognize two teachers from Harris Elementary School, Trish Morgan and Beth Peripoli. Our teachers at Harris Elementary School were recently awarded a BOX, which stands for Build Our Kid Success, grant through the Reebok Foundation, so that they can continue to provide wonderful physical activity program for students at their school for the 21-22 school year. Since BOX started at Harris in September of 2016, Trish Morgan, the lead trainer, has provided the opportunity for students to start their day with BOX. She has embraced BOX and implemented the BOX curriculum with energy and enthusiasm that is contagious for anyone involved. Beth Peripoli joined Trish in September of 2019. Beth has quickly gotten up to speed on the BOX curriculum, and together Beth and Trish have consistently delivered a high-energy and fun impactful BOX class to all the students at Harris Elementary School who chose to participate. Principal McKinnon has always been a very, has always been very supportive of BOX at Harris, whose school mission is to challenge students to become active and productive citizens, while the staff strives to help every student reach their potential in an environment that respects diversity. This mission is evident in the environment Trish and Beth create in their BOX class, where everyone is supportive and kind, thus fostering positive social and emotional development of each participant. Even with COVID, Harris Elementary is committed to continuing the BOX program, not only for the benefits of physical activity, but to promote social and emotional learning through cooperative teamwork activities and mindfulness engagement during meditation time. These student bodies and minds will experience the benefits of Trish and Beth's dedication to student health and wellness. Congratulations to Trish and Beth for being the recipients of the grant, and thank, and I thank both of them for their deep, active participation that they take in the program and for the supports that they provide the students at Harris Elementary School. Next, the City of Windsocket will be hosting its 13th Annual Main Street Holiday Stroll on Saturday, December 4th from 2:00 to 7:00 PM at Market Square, with the rain date scheduled for December 11th. There will be entertainment, food vendors, a visit from Santa Claus, a scavenger hunt, family-friendly activities, and a tree decorating contest that our elementary school students will participate in. We look forward to seeing everyone at this event. And lastly, Mr. Chairman, I would like to wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving recess. With that, that concludes my recognitions and announcements.
Thank you, Dr. McGee. Does any school member have any comments regarding recognitions and announcements?
Chairman.
Vice Chair Burke.
Thank you. Two things I'd like to comment on. Congratulations to the teachers at Harris School for their grant from the BOX organization. And it reminded me, just about two years ago, the Harris School also received a grant, excuse me, an award from the BOX organization. So, so the Harris School has obviously been a great hotbed for this BOX program. And I'm glad that as we get out of the COVID, that schools can now get more involved with the BOX program. The second point I want to make, Mr. Chairman, is that I was heartened to hear Dr. McGee's comments about the vaccination sites that are being provided at our elementary schools. I personally think it was good news when the CDC and the FDA approved vaccinations for those 5 to 11. And to me, it's very timely that we have these vaccination sites right now in Windsocket. I went on the Rhode Island Department of Health website this afternoon, and I looked at the percentages for Windsocket. We often hear the state praising the great percentage, but I need to say that we still have some work to do in Windsocket. Let's, let me give you an example. In the years 0 to 24, partial vaccination, which means one shot, 28.8% of the population eligible. In the years 25 to 44, one shot, 58.6% have had that one shot. In the ages 45 to 64, the percentage is a little bit better, 71.4%. And finally, one shot for those 65 and older, it's very good at 91.6%. Most of the cities and towns in Rhode Island were at 100%, but 91 is not bad. The total percentage for Windsocket residents 0 to 65-plus who have at least one shot is 57.4%. It's not the lowest in the state anymore, it's the second lowest, okay? So hopefully with these clinics, we'll be able to help those percentages. And just to, to give the full picture, for the complete vaccination, here are the percentages. That means both two shots. For the ages 0 to 24, the percentage is 24%. For the ages 25 to 44, the percentage is 52.8%. For the years 45 to 64, 67.4%. And finally, for 65-plus, 87.4%. Not all our elderly have received complete vaccination. And finally, my final comment, is the total complete vaccination percentage for the City of Windsocket ages 0 to 65-plus is 52.6%. Again, it's not the lowest in the state, it's the second lowest, all right? And hopefully, these percentages can increase, and hopefully, families are taking advantage of the opportunities that the Windsocket Education Department has given with these vaccination sites. And I just, I just hope people listen and do the best they can. And please, I'm just providing facts. These are facts from the Rhode Island Department of Health, these are the facts. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Vice Chair Burke. And I just want to add one thing to the holiday stroll. It is not just being held at Market Square, it's being held all along Main Street, almost from the stadium all the way down to Main Street, all the way down to Market Square. And there's plenty of activities that will be occurring. There will be a trolley to, you know, bring people up and down the street. There will be food trucks, and there'll be all kinds of activities, especially in the Mullins Lot. So it'd be great if you came out on December 4th and enjoy the holiday stroll. It's always a lot of fun, even if it's cold, you always can find something warm to drink or to eat. And I also want to wish all of my colleagues here on the dais and all of you out there a happy Thanksgiving for you and your family. Ask you to enjoy yourselves and stay safe. Of course, we have to add, stay safe. But you can eat as much as you'd like, it's, it's a special holiday. I will, I will actually have a drink of oat milk on Thanksgiving Day in honor of certain people that I know very well in my family. Anyone else? Then I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the recognitions and announcements. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor?
Aye.
Next, I'll make a motion to approve the October 27, 2021 closed meeting minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke. Any changes, modifications to the minutes? Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc. Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to approve the October 27, 2021 open meeting minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Any changes, amendments to the minutes? Hearing none, Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next, I will, will go into the consent agenda, and I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Leclerc, Mrs. Costa.
Mr. Chair, I need to recuse myself.
Please note that Mrs. Kepiscus will recuse herself. Is there anyone, any member of the committee would like to take any item out of the consent agenda as a special item? None? Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Dr. McGee, I'll ask you for your superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I'm going to start with the personnel matters, as I usually do. We have added, as you witnessed this evening, four full-time employees, the assistant principals and the special education chairperson, as well as a special education classroom teacher, fate teacher at Hamlet Middle School. We've also added a 10-month secretary at Citizens in, in the Citizens Building on the Citizens Poltheer Campus, as well as, we have 13 hourly stipend extracurricular positions from the last school committee meeting until this evening. Second agenda item on my report is a LEAP grant update. So as I discussed briefly in my recognitions and announcements, the commissioner and the governor were here a few weeks ago to hold a press conference announcing this LEAP grant. So let me explain a little bit more of what this is. The acronym LEAP stands for Learning Equity and Accelerated Pathways. We are fortunate, as I said earlier, to be one of nine districts that will be receiving up to $4 million. Let me explain what the eligibility was based on, because again, it only went to nine districts in the state. So RIDE determined districts' eligibility based on metrics across four categories, one being student enrollment and demographics, two being academic performance and school climate and student well-being, as well as COVID-19 health metrics. So that's what they used to establish the nine districts. And really, what it comes down to is the, the nine districts were most impacted over the, over the last year and a half through the COVID pandemic. What supports will our district receive? So we're going to be receiving matching funds from RIDE, and as I, as I said, it's up to $4 million. So we've been notified by RIDE that we will receive $4 million. So what'll happen is, with our SER3 funds, we are going to be spending $4 million of those funds in a variety of areas, which I'll talk about momentarily, and RIDE is going to be matching that $4 million. So really, we're going to be receiving $4 more million than we normally would have received through our SER3 funds. However, this is not through SER3, it's just $4 more million that we will, we will receive. There, there will also be participation in a series of workshops focused on continuous improvement to build strategic planning capacity. A superintendent institute, which is provided by an organization from Harvard University called Proving Ground. So we've started the process already. Dr. Holt and I were present for the first institute, which is basically a virtual workshop that lasted most of the day, which, which was getting us up to speed around preparing the district for this, this LEAP grant process and putting the district in a position where we can establish our areas of focus. They're all, we also had a meeting with, with the Department of Education today at the McPhee Administration Building, and we started looking at our data, our district-wide data, and the areas of focus that we've been doing work on, that we've been, you know, working to support teaching and learning equity and, and so on and so forth for the, for the last few years, including areas that we will be working with them to potentially start to focus on as well. So those areas, they're priority areas. As I said, it's equity, expanded learning, instruction, student well-being, student engagement, school talent, district talent, and school improvement. So we've started the process, the process will continue as we put together our district-wide team that will work with, with RIDE around those areas of focus, and we're going to determine what areas we want to concentrate on, and we will be collaborating with them. They'll be providing us with the support. This is not a, a situation where they're telling us what to do. I, I know that there, there's been some, some concern over the years that, you know, RIDE will come in and tell districts, "You have to do this." That's not what's happening here. They are going to listen to what we're doing, and they're going to support us in the work that we've already started and work that we've got to start. So I'm really excited about this opportunity that has come to the Windsocket Education Department. And as we get a little bit more into the process, I'll be sharing more with the school committee as it relates to what areas of focus we're going to select and, you know, what, what effect that's going to have ultimately on our students and student achievement, because that's the reason we're doing all of this, is, is to improve student achievement. With that, Mr. Chairman, if the committee has any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any comments or questions for Dr. McGee? Then I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the superintendent's report. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, we'll go into the school committee subcommittee reports. And first, we'll look at the, we'll get a policy update from Mrs. Kepiscus and Vice Chair Burke.
Bring to me again.
Right to you.
Policy Subcommittee met on November 4th, meeting was called to order at 4 o'clock. We reviewed and approved the prior minutes, meaning, minutes from the prior meeting. There were only two policies before the Policy Subcommittee for consideration this time. The first policy we discussed was the School Improvement Team, or CIT, policy, and that item is under new business as item number one for approval, first approval tonight. This policy was required by a change in state law which expands the role of school improvement teams at each of our individual schools. The proposed policies intended to bring our policies into an alignment with the updated state law. Among the concerns that were discussed is whether CITS are now subject to the OMA. It's not clear, but presume that you are by setting up agendas and keeping minutes. Number two, how to get parent volunteers. That's always an ongoing problem in any organization that requires parent volunteers. I can speak of that from personal experience. Principals are going to be reaching out to certain parents to ask them about expressing a willingness to serve by sending a letter of interest, as the policy dictates. Number three, participation by staff. It's not contractually mandated, especially department heads, department chairs, which have mandated participation in this policy. After modifying some of the language regarding the agenda, minutes, attendance log to meet potential OMA issues and a full, more full discussion of the mandates of participation by staff, the policy was passed for full review by the school committee with some modifications. The second policy that came before us was the bullying policy. Many in attendance were familiar with where this policy arose out of, the concern about this policy arose out of, and expressed a lot of concerns around privacy issues. In particular, there was a lot of concern about reporting out bullying incident reports monthly to the school committee. The superintendent expressed concern that the information would not be particularly useful to the school committee in doing its job, as it would essentially be a number in a report. They cannot even be identified as to schools, grade levels, et cetera, as the same where I'll be identifying information which may make us subject to allegations of FERPA violations. There's also concerns about the reported numbers alone may create worse school climate issues, perceptions that our schools are out of control, et cetera. Yes, there are problems, but putting the spotlight on them might only make them worse. The bullying issue was better addressed as part of the district's and school's strategic plans for the superintendent. The principals present expressed two real concerns. Number one, situations which may appear alike but may actually end in different results. Punishments that are not necessarily the same for each bullying report, often due to extenuating circumstances unknown to all and which could not be discussed because of FERPA. Number two, bullying reports are not Number two, bullying reports are not completed in every incident. A student or parent may view something as bullying when it does not actually meet the definitions of bullying. Concerns were expressed about providing a monthly report to the school committee, even if it's limited to the number of reports filed that month and the number determined to be actual bullying, as this edges close to a FERPA violation with any identifying information or educational records. While no one denies that bullying exists and seems worse this year as a result of the children socializing after being isolated for months due to the pandemic, there is a feeling that this is overkill and might not, it might even worsen the problem. There was particular concern about a bullying committee, which was suggested in the policy. Principals were concerned that the proposed committee might see it as their duty to review each and every incident report and pass judgment on the actions taken or not taken by administrators. Concerns expressed included, number one, it must be clear that it is not a subcommittee of the school committee. Number two, the privacy and FERPA concerns that I've already raised. Number three, finding parents who are willing to participate if they believe their children are being, the concern is that parents may be willing to participate if they believe their children are being bullied, but will depart as soon as they believe their problems have been resolved, which is historically true of most of our parent organizations. And number four, the school committee's job is policy, handling the schools. That is the job of the administrators, superintendents, principals, et cetera. The Subcommittee did ask our attorneys to punch up our current bullying policy so as to make it our own, as opposed to a state policy that's been adopted by us, but per the direction of the Subcommittee to remove the monthly reporting requirements to the Wensocket School Committee and the bullying Subcommittee requirement. Reporting back to the Wensocket School Committee of bullying figures will be done likely in closed session twice per year, as mandated by the states and our current bullying policy. The next meeting of the school committee, excuse me, Policy Subcommittee meeting is December 9th, at which time we are hopeful that the amended bullying policy will be back on our agenda, as well as organizational questions as to how our policies will be set up on our website and in our student handbooks. The meeting was adjourned at 5:17 PM. That was my report, Mr. Chair.
Any committee member have any questions or comments for Mrs. Kapiskas or Vice Chair Burke? Mrs. Costa.
So I just have a quick question, because I know that it, so for you guys to report back, so it's going to go back to the initial two times a year, but yet I've been elected since November, almost a year now, well, over a year now, and I have yet to see a bullying report. Not so much, like, I understand their concerns that we can't see each report, but if we're just getting like a number in what was deemed to be bullying, why is it that we wouldn't be able to get that on a monthly basis rather than every two years? Because, I mean, twice a year, because of the fact that obviously we haven't seen it yet.
Would you like to address that? Or Mrs. Kapiskas?
Aye. I can basically state what I have from my minutes that essentially say that the principals do not feel that that information would be useful to the school committee to report back on a monthly basis, and it would be onerous on them to report it back on a monthly basis. They report it only to the district and to RIDE every six months. And I also agree that we've never seen those numbers from the district, and that was impressed upon the superintendent that the school committee, under our own policy, as enacted right now before any amendments, requires that that number be given to us semiannually. And he said he will comply with that, he will provide us with that, but it's not going to be particularly useful information, in my opinion. It's going to be a number. It's not even going to be X number of incidents at Wensocket Middle School at Hamlet, X number of incidents at the high school. That is edging close towards a FERPA violation, and therefore, on advice of council and after discussions with the Subcommittee, it's going to be simply a number, and I don't think it's going to be particularly useful, but it will be provided to us going forward.
I just, the whole point of it was just to see that we're bringing more awareness, so if the situation wasn't handled correctly, now we have the tools to be able to kind of make sure that they are being handled correctly and that we are on it, making sure that these situations are more aware.
I may respond. I think that was exactly part of the concern of many of the principals. They do not want us reviewing their decisions, and frankly, I don't think it's our job to review their decisions. As we've reviewed policies for the three years that I've been on the school committee, we've done our level best to take us out of reviewing those decisions, for examples, for example, decisions with regard to suspensions. Our policy was modified to take us out of that process. The superintendent is the end of the road of the district. If someone wants to take an appeal of a suspension that was then supported by the superintendent, that appeal is to RIDE, it's no longer to the school committee, and therefore, we are taken out of that equation. Our job is policy, it's not running the schools. Running the schools is up to the superintendent and the administrators, and that's why the superintendent administrators were basically telling me at our Policy Subcommittee meeting, "Stay in your lane. This is not your lane, this is our lane." And I see their point. I can absolutely see their point, and they're very concerned about us not knowing anything about the facts and not being able to know anything about the facts, second guessing their decisions.
I just, like I said, I just want more awareness to it, to know that it's.
We're not a discipline, we don't get involved in discipline. That's what the administration and the schools do. Like Mrs. Kapiskas says, our job is policymaking, not administering, administering those policies when it comes to especially something like this.
Anyone?
I may just add to that, with regard to the report of the numbers in particular, there was especially a concern at the higher grade levels that reporting those numbers may actually perpetuate more instances of bullying. It may actually stir the pot, and it creates more school climate issues. And there are enough school climate issues, as we've discussed both here and in policy and in curriculum for that matter, associated with behavioral issues that we're seeing that we never saw before if the children returned to school. After a year and a half of isolation, if they were doing what they were supposed to do, they're now forced to socialize, and a lot of them have lost those skills. And I think that bullying is particularly an issue now because of that, and that's why they're trying to work on that through curriculum. And something that one, with one student might be bullying, with another one it might not, simply because of the circumstances, and the principals would know that, and a committee would not, and they could not, and that's the problem. Thank you.
Chairman.
Vice Chair Burke.
Just from memory, prior to the pandemic, I remember almost all the elementary schools had projects throughout the school year dealing with the idea of bullying, discussing it with their students and putting on presentations, and I believe they really made it a very visible issue in the schools, and maybe now as we slowly come back, the schools may be able to bring that back, which I thought was helpful a few years ago.
Thank you, Vice Chair Burke. Anyone else? Then I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the policy update. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Vice Chair Burke and Mrs. Costa, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, I'll ask you, Mrs. Kapiskas, to give us the CELEC update.
CELEC met on November 4th. It was a virtual meeting, as we've been conducting all our meetings for CELEC virtually, began at 6:00 PM, began with quick introductions. Ms. Morrell, the Special Ed Director, advised all that letters should have gone out by now to all families identifying their student's caseworker and service providers. She reviewed then the order of contact for parents seeking to discuss issues they may be struggling with with regard to their child's needs. A written summary will be provided to me and will be emailed to the entire CELEC list serve of what that particular, I refer to it as the pecking order, will be. I, as acting chair, also told the CELEC members that something we usually provide in person at the first meeting would be provided to me by email, which I did. It's called, I call it the alphabet soup of IEP abbreviations. It's basically a glossary of what all those letters mean, so people can know what you're talking about when you're at an IEP meeting, because parents don't necessarily know and they're afraid to ask because they don't want to look stupid. Dr. McGee then reviewed the disappointing RICAS scores and reminded all of the scores were disappointing throughout the state, but I just saw a particularly steep decline, downward trend. Obviously, COVID and the necessity of distance learning had an impact on this. One parent who's a paraprofessional in district advised all that the scores are particularly sad, as much time was spent in the 2019, 2020 school year prior to COVID to prepare the students for the RICAS, but as we know, that test was never given. Unfortunately, there was no special focus on RICAS testing when we were at distance learning. I think many suspected it wouldn't be given, but this likely impacted our 2020, 2021 scores. Dr. McGee thanked the parent for the hard work, for her hard work and the hard work of all of our staff and students to prepare for the RICAS test they never took. The acting chair asked if we were penalized for students who declined to come back to school for in-person testing, and Dr. McGee advised that those students were not given zeros, as would usually be the case. We cannot really blame the drop on scores on this at all. Dr. McGee then reviewed the happier news that the district was receiving a LEAP grant from RIDE as one of nine districts who were particularly hard hit by COVID. I will defer the rest of those comments to what he's already provided. I, as school committee liaison, advised all that the next school committee was tonight, next school committee meeting is tonight, and on the agenda, we'd be discussing policies regarding the school improvement teams, and I encourage all parents to become a voice in their, each of their students' schools by becoming part of the SIT team, because the SIT team policy now requires involvement for the community at large, as well as family and students of each school in the higher grades. All parents are encouraged to express an interest to serve on the school's SIT team so you can have more voice in your child's school. One parent present already expressed an interest, and her name was given to the vice principal of her child's school. Parent commented in the chat that they felt the district needed more service providers, occupational therapy, speech-language pathologists, PT, paraprofessionals, and the like. Ms. Morrell agreed and advised that all the district had hired additional providers, more were needed, and that the agencies that provided them simply did not have enough personnel to go around. The district does all it can to post available positions and fill them, but the task has always been difficult and is made only more difficult by COVID. The paraprofessional shortage is longstanding and is not limited to our district or even our state. We continue to solicit newly certified teachers' assistance, but with limited success at best, and Ms. Morrell and I both said we were going to stand in the hallway outside of RERAW, where they train paraprofessionals and hand out balloons and job applications the next time they have graduation. The next meeting of the CELEC will be on Thursday, December 2nd, at 6:00 PM, and will be virtually. Due to COVID, I informed them that I would not be hosting holiday potluck this year, but I wished everyone a happy Thanksgiving. The meeting adjourned at 6:47. And in addition to those minutes, I'd like to provide you with a little update on attendance. It was better. It certainly wasn't where it was last year when we were at remote learning, but I think attendance was better at this meeting. We had more parents participating, which was encouraging.
That's great. Thank you, Mrs. Kapiskas. Any comments, questions for Mrs. Kapiskas?
Yeah.
Mrs. Costa.
Just very quickly, so if a parent is interested on becoming on that SIT team, how would they go about that? Just let their principal know?
The policy provides, it's before us tonight, but if we enact it, the policy provides that parents submit a letter of intent to the principal. It could be something as simple as, "I would like to work on the SIT team." The principal will keep those, that information together, and the principal makes decisions on who will actually serve, both from the staff, parents, and in the upper grades. Students will elect their representatives.
Thank you.
Folks and folks outside the community, the business community.
And community members, yes.
Right. Anyone else? Thank you very much for your report. I'll make a motion to receive and place on file a CELEC update. Do we have a second? Second, Mrs. Costa. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I will ask Vice Chair Burke and Mrs. Costa to give us the health and wellness update.
Thank you. The Health and Wellness Subcommittee met this Monday, November 15th, at 4:00 here in the Hamlet Middle School in room 124. We approved the minutes of our September 9th meeting, and the first item of our agenda concerned the University of Rhode Island's Nutrition Education Program, which is going on right now with Harris School. At our meeting, a young woman named Savannah from Grade 5 of the Harris School, she made a presentation on the program. She spoke about how her classmates in Grade 5 had done a survey of favorite vegetables and favorite fruits. The survey showed the favorite vegetables were carrots, tomatoes, and corn. The favorite fruits were apples, oranges, and watermelons. Savannah did tell us that her favorite vegetable was asparagus. In the final weeks of this eight-week program with URI, the students will create several recipes. They will then vote on their favorite recipe, and then they'll have it served in the cafeteria for lunch, provided by Sodexo. In our next agenda item, Ashley Plant, Director of Wensocket Sodexo Operations, discussed statistics of the breakfast and lunch programs at all the schools. Since the beginning of the school year, the numbers of students participating in both breakfast and lunch programs has increased. Ms. Plant did note that some difficulties have occurred with the food supply chain in the district, as it is also happening in the state and in the country. She did note, though, however, that the overall, that overall, the Sodexo has been successful in getting the food needed for the students in spite of these challenges. In our next agenda item, Ms. Curran Weatherall of the Rhode Island Healthy Schools Coalition discussed its recent successful breakfast event for all health and wellness members. She also discussed available PD opportunities for the state's health education curriculum. Next, Gigi DeBello of Project Owea continued the discussion of Project Owea's work in the schools with mental health activities. And Lisa from the Sojourner House also explained the workings of her grant with the schools on mental health issues. And finally, the Wensocket Prevention Coalition, which has provided a lot of projects within, has partnered with our schools in the high school over several projects, has just begun in the high school a project called the Green Bandana Project. It offers students a safe outlet to receive connections with social and emotional and mental health providers in the state. Students would carry a green bandana attached to their backpack, which would signal to other students that you can approach this student and she will provide resources if necessary. Our next meeting is scheduled for January 24th, 2022, at 4:00 in room 124 in the Hamlet Middle School, and we adjourned about 5:10. And those are the minutes for our meeting, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Vice Chair Burke. Any questions, comments?
Can I, Ms. Costa, would you like to add anything?
Just really quickly, we were told that Dr. McGee may be a dantin tomato or a dantin broccoli as well for the healthy vegetable program. I just wanted to put that out there, because she said she wanted to see, Savannah said she wanted to see dantin vegetables.
Spoiled by secret.
Anyone else? Then I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the health and wellness update. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Costa. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Today, Mr. Leclerc and I attended the Finance Subcommittee, and I'll ask our Finance Director to give us the update.
Chairman. Wednesday, November 17th, 3:00 PM, the Finance Subcommittee convened. After approving the initial minutes from the prior meeting, there was a discussion about our OPEB performance over the last quarter. The OPEB performed well, and that's the other post-employment benefits account that we have that we're able to draw down on for retiring medical benefits. The account performed well over the last quarter, so it was determined by the Finance Subcommittee that no changes will be made to the balanced approach that we're taking at this time. But again, we will revisit it in a quarter and see how it's going. Just for the record, since we initially invested just short of $700,000 on 3/15/2018, which is about three and a half years ago, we've netted just over $283,000. So the account has performed well over the last three and a half years, and we will continue to monitor it on a quarterly basis going forward. After that discussion, we moved on to a discussion about ESER expenditures and the overview for that. We did go through all of our ESER categories, which include ESER, our ESER set-aside, supplemental impact aid, summer urban block grant, and the subteacher grant. Just for your reference, all of those accounts, that's roughly a little over $21 million we received over the last three fiscal years. ESER III that's coming down is going to be $29 million, and that's what, that was discussed as well, the planning process, how we're beginning that with ESER III. As Dr. McGee stated earlier, we have pledged $4 million of LEAP funds from that. As Dr. McGee stated earlier, we have pledged $4 million of LEAP funds from that. So we're now preparing a budget for $25 million, and how we'll be spending that over the next few fiscal years. I plan on using Subcommittee meetings in December and January to get, hopefully, community input at that point. Maybe we can get some, get some input from the community about how to spend these mon, spend these funds, as that is a requirement as part of our ESER III application. We haven't made a new meeting date yet, but it's looking like it's going to be early in December at this time. It will be communicated out when it is, and the meeting was adjourned at approximately 3:30 PM.
Thank you, Mr. Perrier. I just want to add, the OPEB account is the investment account, is not the expenditure that we make.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yeah, that's.
Because we have two sides to the balance sheet. This is the monies that we've invested.
Yes, that's correct, Mr. Chairman.
Correct. So monies that go in there, usually they stay there. If we have to take them out, we would have to take them all out.
The only way to really draw those funds down is to actually pay retiree medical bills. So as we see fit, as we see coming down the road a time to do that, we will, we will make that adjustment. At this time, I feel it's in the best interest to leave the principal as it is and let the investment continue to grow, as there's no need to reduce it at this time.
When we look at ESER II, we have roughly $1 million left, as I recall.
Yeah, that's correct. We're going to be budgeting that additional $1 million by the end of this month, just so that we claim those funds, and we have them on, we'll be able to move them over to our budget. As with all the other ESER grants, they're, it's difficult to plan going forward, so we kind of have an idea. But RIDE allows us to go back and capture past expenses with these grants, just so that we have more maneuverability as far as, as the needs for the district pop up, we're able to use these ESER dollars and then go back and get the approval from RIDE afterwards so that the expense can be fully executed.
Great. And the ESER funds, the ESER IIIs, as you mentioned, we have $25 million left that we haven't discussed. We're planning on having several Finance Committee Subcommittee meetings that will be public, hopefully we'll draw the public to these, to identify what areas we're going to be spending those monies.
We'll have a preliminary discussion in December, where we'll have some, you know, the first pieces on the table that we're looking at, and then we'll have another Finance Subcommittee meeting in early January. At some point, maybe not early January, with the goal being on January 15th, ESER III will be presented to the school committee for final approval, so that we can submit to RIDE. The grant is due by January 31st.
Right. We have to issue the final approved by the end of January.
Correct.
Any, any committee members have any questions, comments for Mr. Perrier? Then I'll make a motion, receive and place on file a finance update. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa and Vice Chair Burke. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, and last Subcommittee update will be the curriculum update, where Mrs. Kapiskas and I attended this week, and I'll turn it over to you once more.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The curriculum Subcommittee, I should do what you do and say, and I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Holt, but I'm not going to do that to you. Curriculum Subcommittee.
I, I am not stopping you from doing that. You know that.
You wish I would, because you always say my minutes are like actually being there.
Look at that. There we go.
You have to teach me how to abbreviate, Dr. Holt. Okay. Curriculum Subcommittee met yesterday at 2:00 PM. Two items were on our agenda. One was student academic performance data update, and the other one was the LEAP update. And Dr. Holt reviewed student academic performance data for 2020, 2021's RICAS test results. Those results were reviewed in detail with a focus on trends shown by the data with regard to questions that have been released, as well as unreleased questions, which information was provided to the standard as to which was being tested by those questions. The focus was determined, was to determine in what areas our students showed proficiency and in what areas they were lacking. He tend to use this information for targeted intervention in those areas, as the district had done prior to the COVID quarantine year. As was the case before COVID, with regard to RICAS students, elementary and middle school, grades three through eight, the district will likely target students who are almost proficient for high dosage tutoring in those areas which they did not complete as successfully in an effort to bring them to proficiency. There was an uneven performance by students across the district. It is also noted that due to COVID, attendance for testing was essentially voluntary, but the district was not penalized for students who failed to attend, and that they were not marked as zeros. But it was noted by the high school principal that some of the higher achieving students from the high school were doing very well on distance learning and did not return to take the test, and for this reason, their lack of attendance may have affected the downward trends in the test results. With this being said, across the grades, our petition, participation rate dropped from 98.3% in 1819 to 73.9% in 2021, no testing being done in 1920 due to COVID. With regard to our high school students who take the PSAT and SAT, it was noted that there was a drop, but it was not as significant. It was also noted that some of our high performing students elected to remain at distance learning and were not present for the testing, which also affected our results as previously stated. It's also noted that testing at these grade levels is more rigorous, as the standards are more rigorous. The district's plan is to focus on adding SAT prep work with targeted instruction in the materials, so that stu, on the materials that students can expect to see on the college board tests, both in terms of topics and specific questions. One example was given, the SATs presume students have taken Algebra II, which we do not require of our students. There are other alternatives for the math class in that year. And some elect not to take Algebra II. Therefore, when they sit for the SATs as their state assessment, they are seeing questions on topics they have never been instructed on and perhaps never even seen. To this end, the SAT was never designed for all students. It is designed for college-bound students who would take Algebra II, as many four-year colleges require it. It's also noted that student results on the state testing day are the only results included in the statewide reports. Many students take the SATs several times for better results, but these results are not factored into this report. In response, the district is revamping its curriculum so as to include some Algebra II topics in Algebra I, which all students are required to take. The question was raised if this was a failure in teaching. There is no simple answer. We can go teacher by teacher to see if there are any trends, and if so, support those teachers with PB and such to help support their students. Sometimes there's just particular cohorts of years where students do not perform as well. There are a variety of reasons. One of the big reasons factored, that was a factor, is our students entering the Wensocket Education Department in pre-K, K, and 1 often come to us lacking many basic skills we would expect to see. The inability to recognize letters and/or numbers, the inability to recognize and/or write their own names, for example. These students start school at already performing below grade level when we get them. Therefore, we must really focus on early childhood to prepare our students for the more rigorous material to come as they're promoted from grade to grade. We must remember that urban life is different than suburban life, and the RICAS compares apples to oranges, and that it views suburban and urban districts equally. To that end, it may be more useful to compare similarly situated districts in the state, and when this was done informally at our meeting, we were not that far off the percentages of other schools in the urban ring. We are working with our community partners in an effort to provide more early intervention experiences for WED students coming in, but we clearly need to address this before the students actually get to us. All educators present indicated that it is easier to teach ELA virtually than math, than math, and the scores reflect this. So how will the district deal with this, and what can we expect from the 21, 22 scores? The districts must first, district must first fill the gap in learning experiences, first returning our students to pre-pandemic levels before we can actually see growth. Despite this statement, the district's goal is still growth, and we intend to use, a term I'd never heard before, high dose tutoring to achieve this growth. All we're asked to keep in mind that as we close the learning gap which resulted from distance learning, students may fall behind in what they should be learning now, and that will impact test results. All of our schools are also impacted by COVID and pandemic issues that are ongoing. For example, behavioral issues related to a return after a gap without much socialization, anxiety over the return to school, and ongoing outbreaks and quarantines. The LEAP task force was discussed briefly. I will not review that because I think we've beaten it to death tonight. A brief discussion ensued discussing, with regard to the changes in curriculum that will be coming to the high school, particularly in the ELA area. Mr. Gale says we need to do something different for our kids to give them a reason to come to school. More details will be forthcoming, and I'll leave that surprise to all of you. These changes are intended to support our students in a different way, much like credit recovery programs have done. The next curriculum Subcommittee meeting will be Tuesday, December 14th, 2021, at 3:00 PM, because we're not meeting at 2:00 PM when they dismiss over here ever again. It will be here at the middle school at Hamlet in room 124. We adjourned at 2:56.
Thank you, Mrs. Kapiskas.
You're welcome.
Any comments, questions for her? Then I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the curriculum update. Do we have a second?
Okay.
Second by Mr. Leclerc. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Now I'll ask our Director of Operations, Mr. Notorianni, to give us the facilities technology update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the technology staff's been very busy balancing the work orders for staff and students along with technology projects throughout the district. Attached is a work order summary report for your review. The district is also working or in the process of reconciling and validating state reporting data for the month of November. Specifically, we've uploaded the ILP data, and I'd like to thank Mrs. DiRizzo for her efforts on that. We're currently, or we've currently reprogrammed the Skyward database to account for the attendance data, and we're now going to proceed with the cleanup process in anticipation of report for December. The at-home instructed students have been uploaded in the system, and I thank Dr. Holt for her efforts in her department in making sure that that's accurate. The graduates, retentions, dropout reporting, and June graduate class have also been reported to the state, and I think it's worth noting that Mr. Gale and his team have done an exceptional job this year of cleaning up that data to try and get the most accurate information there as possible. In addition to the state reporting, I wanted to report out that the technology department has, for what I believe will be the first time in my tenure, will be filling all the open positions in the department by mid-December. So this is the first time that I've been here that all of our positions will be filled, which we should be able to provide full support to the entire district. Under facilities, the facility staff is still operating with several vacancies, and I'm hopeful there are some candidates that will be filling those positions in the coming weeks. Attached to this report is also the work order summary for the last three days for facilities. In addition to the work orders that they perform every day in emergency repairs, our facility staff is working on making repairs to the pre-K playground at Porthier Elementary School. They are working on the master key project district-wide, or they continue to work on that. They're installing medical lock boxes in all of the nurses' office with hard readers to go along with the key fob system we have. This week, we'll be accepting and helping to install pre-K furniture at Porthier Elementary School, and they recently started the upgrade of the outside panels at Coleman Elementary, and they anticipate putting up a new sign in the very near future. Transportation, Durham School Services added additional drivers, and we're close to being fully staffed. We continue to experience delays due to the staffing issues, but I'm hopeful that in the near future, things will go back to normal for, in terms of Durham standards. And the school resource officer program, we are continuing to review the traffic pads at all of our schools. We recently put up, reviewed and put up signage behind Villanova Middle School, which we're hoping will help with the dismissal. And next, we'll be focused on Porthier Citizens Campus, and then move on to December, in December and January, Burnin', Coleman, Harris, Globe, and Savoy. Finally, the SROs are currently assisting with the development of an RFP, enough the safety review of all of our protocols here in the district, and we hope to have something to report back to the superintendent in the near future and eventually share with the committee. That concludes my report this evening, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Notorianni. Any questions, comments for him? Mrs. Costa.
Is, are we supposed to be getting, or are the schools supposed to be getting Chromebooks or something, for schools that's delayed for some reason?
So the student Chromebooks, you asked about the student Chromebooks. So the student Chromebooks, we distributed student Chromebooks in grades six, seven, and eight, grades nine, and grade 12, and then we paused the rollout to make sure that all of the support was there, that everything was working for those. And we continue to use the existing Chromebooks for the remaining grade levels. And in December, I apologize, I don't remember the date at the tech Subcommittee that I had reported out. It was last month, the month that I reported out, we would resume the additional rollout sometime in December. So, so the remaining ones will be distributed, but we distributed approximately half in the district, and now we're in the process of looking how we're going to roll out the remaining ones. We're trying to be cognizant of the fact that we're rolling out brand-new equipment, and we want to ensure that the students, now that they're fully back in school, are taking responsibility for the new equipment, making sure there's not damages and whatnot. So we're taking a thoughtful pause, I would call it, in order to make sure that that goes out smoothly.
Anyone else?
Chair?
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Quick question, transportation. We're all reading about and hearing about bus driver strikes all over the state. Any ear to the ground, whether or not we have to worry about that in the near future with Durham?
So while I'm aware that Durham has another local bargaining unit here in Rhode Island that's, that voted to go on strike, I'm not aware of any strike or potential strike here in Wensocket. I had a conversation with Durham's leadership as recently as a couple of weeks ago, and I would like to have thought, and I would like to have thought that they would have mentioned that to me, but I've not heard of anything like that happening here. Our issues are just mainly just shortages of drivers, like most of the other communities, and of significant notice, statewide transportation that's operated by RIDE has also experienced driver shortages.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
One question to that. Is there a way for us to find out if they're going to go on strike? Or do we just know if it happens?
So I, I could, I could directly ask them tomorrow, but I, we're in contact with them on a weekly basis. As a matter of fact, sometimes I'm in contact with them on a daily basis, depending upon what's transpiring with transportation issues, and they've not indicated they have any collective bargaining agreements open at this time that they're negotiating with the local union. So as a matter of fact, they did have a different issue with another circumstance with, in regard to, related to our district, but it was in our district placement organization, and they happen to have Durham, and we had some lengthy conversations about that issue, but it's not been brought up, and I suspect that we're, we're in good shape.
All right. So I think the strikes, or the potential strikes around, you know, for the other bus company was around contract, was about contracts. And since we don't have that issue, or they don't have that issue here at Durham, we should be okay. But I don't think it hurts to mention that, see if there are any problems, foreseeable problems that they have with their drivers.
I will make a phone call first thing in the morning, Chairman.
Anyone else? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the facilities technology update. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, we'll go into new business, and I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the school improvement team, SIT, policy for first passage. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke and Mrs. Costa. I'll turn it over to Vice Chair Burke and Mrs. Kapiskas. Is there anything more to say?
There really isn't. I think we reviewed in detail what the significance is. Essentially, the SIT, the school improvement teams, have more say in a lot of how the school is run, including some say in hiring decisions, and this is all pursuant to state law. And basically, what we've done is proposed a policy and given preliminary approval through the Subcommittee to that policy to bring us in line with state law. Do I think the state law makes sense on a personal note? No, it doesn't. But the bottom line is, it is what it is, and our policy has to align with it, and that's essentially all we're doing. We're bringing a, asking you to approve a policy will bring us in line with state law.
We'll be in line with state law, it seems, after reading the policy, but it's not exactly what we're doing now. Right now, we've got SIT, school improvement teams that we formed, but now we're going, this, now we're generating a policy that'll pull us in line. I guess the real issue is going to happen if we can't find people to volunteer in all the areas that are required.
Exactly. And I think that, that was probably the biggest issue of concern among the administrators present, as well as me and I believe Mr. Burke. We both have had enough experience with, in particular, parent groups, that you're not going to be able to find enough parent volunteers in some of the schools. And I also think the community participant is going to be difficult, because on a more personal note, I served on the SIT team at the high school during my four, my daughter's four years there, and we had one community person represented on that SIT team, and he was not present for every meeting. And the parents that were present, I say this all the time, but the same three parents that were running everything were not present.
And what's interesting, and the policy pretty much states that we're going to gather letters, the principals will gather letters, plural. We'll be, we'll be happy if we find one.
Yeah, it kind of anticipates that you're going to have 10 letters, from which you're going to choose two or three. I don't think that's going to be the case, but the policy's prepared for it. I don't think that's going to be the case, but the policy is prepared for it should that be the case.
And each building has to have a CIT team. So you think of all the volunteers that we need to, to work effectively on these teams. That's going to be incredible to see. So I guess once this policy is adopted, it's going to be for next June, I would think. I mean, we've got teams now, right, Sarah? You think we've got teams now, CIT teams that are in place, or we're functioning in each building, but now the policy says it goes through second passage next time. When does that get implemented? Does that get implemented for June to start the next year, the next school year? How do you see that playing out? Would you please speak into the mic, please? Once, once it goes through second passage, the principals are going to have to look at the policy and start ginning up the CIT teams. For other districts that have them, that follow this, follow the state law, what have they found in terms of finding the number of volunteers? And they've been able to find the people necessary in all schools? No, no, I'm just talking about the ones you're familiar with.
Dr. McGee?
Chairman, I would agree with Attorney Rapport. I think, right now, every, every school has a school improvement team. The question is, based on this soon-to-be newly adopted policy, is that there are certain stakeholders that may not, in all of our schools, be members of the school improvement teams, business and community, you know, folks, as well as family and families and parents. So what will happen this year is the principals will reach out, really to try to solicit that membership. Whether, how successful they'll be is, you know, to be determined, but, but that's what they'll, they'll need to do. At the secondary level, as part of the policy, students are required to be a part of the school improvement team. So I think, you know, and I know I've had conversations with Mr. Gill about his school improvement team, and that they actually do have students that, that have been attending, so they'll just have to sort of formalize that. So, so the students that are attending will be, you know, regular members of the school improvement team, and that would also happen at the middle schools. At the elementary schools, students are obviously not required because of their age, but I think that principals will need to start to solicit those stakeholders. The other parts of the policy, which includes the school improvement plan, that's not going to change. That will be something that, that the school improvement teams will continue to work on. There's a, there's a June 1 date, which is when the school improvement plans are due to my office, so that we can, you know, that myself and my directors can review them, provide feedback. We'll also be presenting that to the school committee as well, because that's, that's a, that's a change in the, in the policy, is that in the past, it just came to my office and my directors, and we reviewed it and submitted it to Ride by July. So that's one of the changes that will, will occur as well. So, so while it's a change, it really isn't going to affect the process, because they're already doing that now. But I, but again, I think that the biggest change is, is going to be the, the composition of the school improvement team, and like I said, there might be some out there that do have parents that are a part of the, the team, which is great. Those that don't will need to try to solicit that, that partnership with their, with their parents and also the community members.
Just correct me if I'm wrong, the school improvement plans will be used to put together the district strategic plan? Is that how you see that working?
So the, the way that works is, there's a, so there's a district strategic plan, which is a three-year plan. The individual school improvement plans, what they do is they, they'll follow the district improvement plan in, in, in certain areas. They also, when, when the school improvement teams put together their school improvement plans, they go through a process. They, they review a lot of data, and they look at the needs of their school. They do things like root cause analysis. So, you know, so if there's, if the data shows that a certain percentage of students are not proficient, how are they going to address that? So they have to put action plans together to address those areas of need. So they, they use the district strategic plan as sort of a, a model of, of the district priorities. However, each school improvement team may, will certainly have some different action steps and action plans based on the needs of their particular school.
Any, anyone else?
Just one other thing I want to add. In addition to the composition of the committee, the other thing that this also creates potential for a change, or we've advised them to treat that, treat it as such, that this would make CIT teams, which for the most part, when I rely on them, we're rather in formal affairs, a more formal affair, because under this policy, we can anticipate someone would assume that the CIT team is subject to the OMA. That question is open, but CIT teams are going to have to be more formal, not necessarily Robert's Rules of Orders, but we need agendas, we need minutes, because if someone calls you on it, they need to be prepared to have that documentation ready. That's going to change things.
Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Yes.
Leclair.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa had to step away for a moment, but she'll be returning soon. So what do, so what do?
We have a four-nothing vote.
Yes, four-nothing.
Great. Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the appointment of a new member of the school building capital committee. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Leclair. Mr. Perrier, do you want to just let us know who we're thinking about?
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman. At our last meeting of the building committee, based on the discussions, based on conversations that we were having, we felt it was best to get the city council involved so that they were aware of our plans going forward, and it was under that premise that we decided to reach out to the Wensocket City Council and President, President Gentran, and he mentioned that Vice, Vice President John Ward would be a great pick to be on this committee, and we are now inviting him onto it. So that's, that's where we're at with the building committee right now.
Has he accepted the invitation?
Yes, he has accepted the invitation.
I think he'd be excellent as, you know, former chair of the school committee, city councillor, finance director in Lincoln, been involved with the contract negotiation team in the past. Now that we're looking at, you know, the, the need, our future needs for buildings and space, I just think that John Ward is, is perfect, is a perfect fit to this committee.
Any, anyone else? Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
Mr. Leclair.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Next, next I'll make a motion to discuss and approve bid 22-05 WED copiers. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Leclair. Mr. Perrier, talk to us about copying.
This is an exciting one, folks. So the Wensocket Education Department went out to bid for copiers. We received five bids on the fourteen copiers we are looking for, and after reviewing the bids, it is recommended the bid be awarded to Innovex at $2,805.92 a month. This is going to replace many copiers that have really outlived their useful life across the district. Just to kind of take a little sidebar here, there was a time when I started here at the Wensocket Education Department that the school department couldn't get a lease for copiers due to bad credit. So we've kind of been dealing with that. Our credit is actually in much better shape now.
I would think.
So we've decided to move forward and get, replace some of these old machines, take them out of service, and, and replace some of the copiers.
Any comments?
Mr. Chairman, just a quick question.
Vice Chair Burke.
I'm a copier. Thank you, Mr. Perrier. I'm going to ask this question as if I worked for the Consumer Guide magazine and ask you, this was the lowest bid, but did anybody test these copiers?
We actually have, they're Sharp copiers. We actually have some in our fleet right now. We actually did a RFP almost five years ago, and they were for Sharp machines. I called around to the schools, I went and checked on the repair records, and actually, as a matter of fact, I had some conversations today in another school district, because I saw these same copiers in the office of the schools that we were touring, and everybody had positive things to say about them, and the next closest bidder was a thousand dollars off a month. So we're talking a pretty significant amount of money there, and from what I've gathered, both from historical usage here and from opinions on other people from out of district, these are reliable copiers, they're Sharp copiers, just so you know, and I think they're going to be up to the job.
Hey, Vice Chair Burke, you should have seen him. He was almost drooling when he saw that copier today. It was Sharp. Anyone else? Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
Mr. Leclair.
Yes.
We have no, nothing else on our agenda, so I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting at 9:04 PM. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you.